A panel of experts that are going to give these facts. And we're going to go probably a little bit out of order from the agenda that you have before you because we have some last minute changes. But without further ado, I'd like to bring in our village president, Mayor Sherman C. Jones.
Thank you, Kevin. First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming out. I know the weather's not that great, but this is an important meeting and I wish we had more people here in attendance because indirectly it's going to impact you. Let me clear up a couple of things. First of all, let me report to everyone here in the room and let you all know that I am a full-time mayor. I retired from my position with the government, and so I am a full-time mayor. The rumor out there that I got hauled away by the feds is not true. Don't believe that. So let me move along. Tonight's program is being sponsored by the Public Works Department of the Village of Broadview along with our Street Sidewalks and Alley Committee. MC, tonight's event is going to be Kevin McGreeh, and you're going to get some presentations from the professionals in different areas. The first area is going to be the village engineer is going to talk about the infrastructure, what we have, what we got, what the problems are, what the ideas that we have are on the structure. Then along with that, you're going to have the Finance Department, Finance Director Jan Baptis, who's been doing a fabulous job for the Village of Broadview, and Budget Officer Tom Hood. They're going to present, they're going to talk about finances and how we want to finance these particular projects, and we're going to see some scenarios for some different projects. And then you're going to have Public Works, which is going to talk about some of the challenges that we've had with our infrastructure as relates to water main replacements, water repairs, flooding, collapsed drains and tiles and all kinds of other things as relates to our water infrastructure. I do know that we have a special guest here today. Our neighboring mayor Sam Puyer is here tonight, and I'm going to give him a few minutes as soon as I get done to speak to you all. So welcome, Sam, and thanks for coming over to Broadview. Four years ago, you guys elected me mayor, and I made some commitments to you all to be as transparent as possible, to provide as much information as possible, to make sure that you knew everything that was going on within the Village of Broadview with your tax dollars, mine too for that matter. But having said that, some people put out some bad information, taking some factual information and twisting it to make it look a different way. Tonight, you're going to hear factual information. Your questions will be answered. There'll be a Q&amp;A session, and you'll be allowed to ask questions to the professionals, the engineers, and the finance personnel. Along with that, we're going to discuss options and things that we can do and what we propose to do as it relates to the water infrastructure for the Village of Broadview. Now, rates is an issue. I want to be clear on that. Rates are an issue, and water rates historically have been a political polarizing issue in every municipality and every community across the country. The question is, is do we pay now or do we pay later? Is this time the right time to try to obtain money because of the cost of money, which is going to be discussed with finance? Is it better to get it now or to get it later? We understand that the infrastructure is aging, and we know it's going to continue to need repairs, and there's a cost that's associated with that. However, if we wait longer, the repair costs are going to go up, the frequency of the repairs is going to go up, and the cost of the water loss is going to continue to go up. And that impacts you directly, taxpayers. So the question then becomes, do we want to spend money on it now? Do we want to spend money on it later? And then add to that, you have to look at your investment, your home. Your home is, for most of us, is the largest investment that we have, and because it's the largest investment, it deserves the most protection. If flooding impacts the value of your home, then it's the best idea, in my opinion, to make sure that you take every precautionary measure you can to protect that house. I'm not going to belabor you with any more of this. I mean, I can continue to go on and on, but I want to shorten it as much as I can from my perspective. I'll be back later at the end of tonight's agenda. I'm going to allow Sam a few minutes of my time to speak to you, and then we'll move on with the agenda. Mrs. Sam Puyer, President Westchester Jones.
Good evening, everybody, and I'm happy to be here with Sherman. I, along with Sherman, were elected to our offices in 2009. I never met Sherman before, and our first meeting was at the Broadview-Westchester Joint Water Agency, which since 1938, the Village of Westchester and the Village of Broadview have been partners. When we took the helm of that agency, we saw that the building that they were going to construct on 10th Avenue was pretty much going to be a Taj Mahal. It's a pump station. It's supposed to pump water, fresh water, potable water for us to drink that is safe. Sherman and I took a look at the plans. We decided that our predecessors maybe were looking for something that was going to be far too costly and frankly not necessary to supply that, and we pared that down. We fought very hard, going down to Springfield on a number of occasions, contacting our legislators, trying to get an IPA loan, low interest loan, to try to get this building up and running. And I'm happy to announce that we broke ground, we put shovels in the ground about a month ago. They're doing some preparation work, and I'm told probably in the next 10 months or so, we're going to have a brand-new pump station that's going to pump brand-new potable water from the city of Chicago to our communities, and that's a testament. The pump station we have now, it's still functioning. However, we make the sign of the cross pretty much every day that we don't lose a pump, we don't do this, we don't do that. And I know our engineer here, Jim Goomis, here has, he's saying the Venus every week to make sure he takes care. Sherman mentioned briefly about the water rates. You know, we're all in the same boat, Village of Westchester, Broadview, all the ones around. Anybody that gets city water, we're pretty much at Mayor Rahm Emanuel and his city council's mercy. He charged us 25% two years ago, 15% this year, and another 15 over the next two years that we're stuck paying. There's no regulatory authority at this point in time that he could pretty much do what he wants. He's paying for a lot of things that we think, I think, he shouldn't be as far as water mains and that, but you know, it's his filtration system, his pipes are tied to our pipes, so any improvement he does on this system theoretically is an improvement to our system. We can debate that all we want. Trying to get water at the lowest cost to our residents is a goal, and I think we've accomplished that as best as we could over the last couple of years. It's to be seen what's going to happen in the future with that. Another thing, Sherman and I have worked very well together. I'm president of the Westchester Municipal Conference, which Broadview and 46 other communities, or 49 other ones in this area are part of, and we certainly work harmoniously getting all our information. We share information about a host of issues, whether it's gun violence or whatever's going on, school safety. We share these things, and we hook together on a number of occasions and have shared sessions with our police and fire departments to do the best we can because we're your neighbors and you're our neighbors. We always want to be good neighbors. We shared Gardner Road, and we were certainly lucky to have Mrs. Yarvero fend for us to try to get that road paved. It was horrible shape. I know you have an industrial base there, and that's part of your tax base as well. And if the road's terrible to get there and some of the businesses move out, you lose tax dollars, and that's a problem for everybody. Presently, in the Village of Westchester, we're going to be selling bonds in a couple of weeks to improve our infrastructure. I was looking at the map of the Village of Broadview with the red streets, which are probably the worst streets that have been identified, and I go, boy, I wish I had only that number of red streets to do. So we're all in this. Our water pipes, 50, 60 years old. Our roads, I don't know when the last time we had any real wholesale repair of our streets. And everybody's driving on cobblestones, and it's troublesome. I'm not sure of how our predecessors did their jobs, but certainly if they didn't have the money, I can understand it, but a lot of things have gone to pot, and Sherman and I now have to try to figure out how to do that, probably in the worst economic time ever. So as elected officials, you know, there are some troubling times, and we worry about money, and certainly we look frugally, and we don't spend money that we don't have, number one. Number two, we don't, you know, spend money in a wasteful manner. We're taxpayers as well, and you know, we want to keep that going. Another issue out there, certainly for Broadview and the Village of Westchester, certainly the proposed strip club. I thought it was off the table or whatever, but it seems every election cycle we hear, oh, it's coming, it's not coming. My citizens are vehemently opposed of having a strip club, certainly so close to residential areas, our schools and things of that nature. It's not the type of business I think anyone would want in their town. However, the government indicates that you've got to set aside a certain amount of your property, 5%, to adult use, and that's it. It's pretty much the first amendment. So I understand these things are out there, but from the Westchester side of the fence, we certainly are negative. I haven't had anywhere near our towns. It's too bad we have to have that 5% rule. But this is Sherman's meeting. I'm here to tell you that I'm a partner with Sherman. I'm here to tell you that we've worked together for the past four years, and I'm certainly looking forward to working with Sherman over the next four years, my friend.
Thanks for the opportunity to join me from here, Sam, the president of Westchester Municipal Conference. I'm not going to continue on with anything further. I'm going to turn this over to the MC for tonight's presentation, and I'll be back later.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too will sit down quickly. At this time, I'd like to bring on our next speaker. This is our village engineer, Hancock Engineering, Mr. Jim Goomis.
I'm here to talk a little bit about the conditions of your system and proposed plans and what needs to be done to your village system. One thing that, kind of go over a few statistics here. The village has responsibilities of maintaining 35 miles of water main and 35 miles of sewers, roughly. They have 23 miles of roadway. Your water main and your sewers are 60%, over 60% of them are over 60 years old. They're getting towards the end of their useful life. I think everybody can see that by the number of breaks we've had recently, the weather and everything. Trying to kind of go over where we are, where the history has been recently. In 2000 and 2011, the village had replaced about a half mile of water main, and they paved about two miles of streets. In the 90s, they did two miles of water main, four miles of sewer improvements, about 10 miles of street resurfacing. Most of that was all one big bond issue in the early 90s. In the 80s, they did four and a half miles of street of water main, a mile and a half of sewer, and four miles of street. So the village had been doing some work back in the 80s and the 90s, but through the economic times and the situation in the village, the kind of investment in infrastructure has kind of waned over the last few years, and at the same time, your system's aging. So what we did is, next slide, please. Okay, some information we used to try to develop the capital improvement plan. First on, we were hired to evaluate the condition of all the streets within the village. We went through that, did that in 2011, ranked them, condition from 1 to 5. Mayor Puyer was talking about that on the map, that you'll see later. You know, the red is the worst, those degrees on the map is the best. That's the first piece of imagery. And then we've reviewed, Public Works Department has put together a map of water main breaks over the last four years, plotting them on the map, trying to get an idea of where they are. Fortunately, they haven't been concentrated, they're basically scattered all over the village. Also, we're reviewing the complaints on the village's sewer system. I know we've had a situation with flooding there before, and trying to incorporate everything from that as well. And the age of the infrastructure, we'll take, is also something we look at too, and some of the water mains and sewers are the oldest. We want to try to concentrate in that area.
As they get, yeah.
And any operational problems that we might have that come up, you know, isolated areas where there may be an operational problem. One thing that we did exclude is the 80 Acres area. Okay, I'm sorry. One area we did exclude is 80 Acres, which is the area north of Roosevelt, east of 17th from this because that's the only area that's eligible for CWG, and that, we've been using that money, CWG money, to do the improvements to the water, sewer, and streets. CWG is Cook County Development Block Grant. It's for low to moderate income areas. The percentage of people has to, threshold has to be above 49.2%. That is the only area in the village that's eligible for that, so we've been concentrating, you know, any improvements there, we've been using the grant monies. The village is, this year, they get $122,000 to improve some, the remainder of 14th Street and a block of Harvard. And we're about to put an application in the next year, and that is, unfortunately, the amount of money available is actually going up, we think, in CWG, so that we should be able to get, hopefully, a bigger project next year, get a couple more bucks in the area. So when we did that, and we're taking all that information, and what do we use to select what we would propose to do for a capital improvement, and what timeframe to do in, whether 1 to 5 or the 6 to 20-year range? So we use the conditions of the streets. Obviously, we want to try to get our worst-conditioned streets taken care of, but also you want to invest your money at the right time so the street doesn't get, one, it's on the borderline, you don't want it to fall apart totally, or it's more expensive. So we were trying to take that in fact. Looking at the water main break history as well, trying to see if any areas where there's a concentrated number of breaks to adjust the water mains in those areas. Trying to get a spread of the work throughout the village, you know, because everybody, your system, most of it's about the same age, except for a few areas. Coordinate with other improvements is, they mentioned there's going to be a new pump station at 10th Avenue, just south of Roosevelt there, and they're going to be doing some digging and excavating the street there. So one of the things we do is time our improvements so that we can come in and address the street condition and village utilities in coordination with that. That new pump station should help a lot with your system as well, be, provide a much more regulated pressure. And program needs to be fluid, adapt to changes. If you get areas that are starting to get more sewer problems or more, you know, water main breaks, we need to be able to adapt. So the scope of the work on, you know, each area. So first, would be install a new 8-inch water main with new hydrants and new water surfaces to the main. That would go from the B box to the main. Next, we would evaluate the condition of the sewers, have the sewers televise in any of the streets that we're going to be doing to identify any repairs if necessary in those. Next, we'd also repair, we're talking about your drainage structures, your catch basins and those laterals, those have some problems too, and they're more susceptible, so we would replace anything. As we do the street water improvements, we would also replace the sewer work there. And then restoration, will depend on the condition of the street and the scope of the work, but at a minimum, the street would be resurfaced. So we've broken, Director Baptis will kind of talk about this a little more. We broke it into, there was, original proposal was for a residential portion, which is, and that portion, and also doing some work. We're also going to use some other money to do improvements in the residential, in the commercial industrial areas. By the end of the five-year program, based on if it goes through as we hope it would be, be able to replace about six and a half miles of water main, repair six and a half miles of sewer, and paving about seven miles of roadway. And then an EDA grant, the village is applying for a 50% grant funding for water main replacements. Has to be an industrial commercial. This would be for a main on Gardner Road, and also for a section on eastern portion of Roosevelt Road, we're going to add to that as well. We just found out that we can add that to the application. And then the IPA low-interest loan, if you talked about that, is available for water main improvements. We would do some replacement, about 1.4 miles of water main using that funding as well. And village has a current MFT fund balance, that, some cash available that we would use to do some repaving of the streets as well, that aren't necessarily getting water main improvements. Be able to pave about a mile of roadway. So this capital improvement program that we've talked about, and we've been talking about, is about a five-year program. And one of the things we have to look at is, at the end of five years, you're still going to have needs. That five-year program will address a lot, but based on some of the structures and the rate structures that Director Baptis was talking about, it will leave about $400,000 to $400,000 to $500,000 annual revenue to be able to continue doing water and sewer repairs within the village. That revenue is with there to be able to do that as well. You get about $150,000 in MFT money that would be available to do some street resurfacing And this is a copy of the, from the street survey that we did. This is the overall village and the conditions of the roads and how they're ranked from 1 to 5. Red being the worst, green being the best. You can see there isn't too much green, but, and this is the five-year program, obviously we're going to try to address the streets that are 1 and 2, and get into those 3 so that we don't lose the investment. The village did a residential overall paving program in the mid-90s where they paved all the streets, and they're beginning to end of that useful life of that resurfacing, and we want to try to put some investment into those so that they don't get too bad. And at that, I think I'll turn it back to Kevin.
Thank you very much, Jim. One of the immediate questions I can probably answer right now, what is MFT? MFT stands for motor fuel tax. And basically, no matter where you buy gas, those taxes that are taken at the pump go into a big, huge pot in Illinois, and that pot is distributed amongst the various towns and municipalities based on our population. That's why it's so important during census time that we stand up and get count. So based on our 2010 census, we get so much of that pot, and that's the money that we get to use for special, special projects. At this time, we'd like to bring on our finance director, Ms. Jan Baptis. She's going to talk about the money issue now. Ms. Jan Baptis.
Good evening, everyone. Can y'all hear me all right?
Yeah.
Thank you. My name is Jan Baptis. For those who might not have ever met or seen me, and I've been serving as the finance director. My task today is to tell you how much it's going to cost, which is what everybody wants to talk about. Before you start now. I did it before you start. All right. The mayor tasked me with finding out or figuring out how to pay for the much-needed infrastructure needs. And step one in that is to first determine how much we actually need, and that's what this slide is. So my first step, or my first task, was to meet with Mr. Goomis, who you all just heard from, who, based on all of their analysis, looking at our street, not only, we look at sewer, street, and the water main replacements, and the number at this point in today's dollars is to address all the needs of the village. We would need 63.1 million dollars. Well, of course, that's a whole lot of money which we don't have. So we broke that down further and broke it into two pieces. The first piece being phase one, which, those are the needs that need to be addressed in the next 1 to 5 years, and of the 63.1, 26.3 million of it is what we need to address in the immediate future, and then on the longer term, another 36.8 million. The other thing that we broke out was looking at what is commercial, what is industrial, and what is residential. The reason for this breakout is depending on the area, it's potential funding sources that we might be able to tap into. Some grants only fund industrial, commercial projects, so we need to break them out. And we do have a TIF that actually is part of the road, which is Roosevelt Road TIF, so certain TIF monies can be used for certain things on Roosevelt Road. So hence the breakout. But the bottom line is, we need 63 million, and of that 63 million, we need 26.3 in a hurry. Next time. So looking at our funding sources, what we did was, looked at the funds that actually benefit from this. The village has various operational funds. Those who comes to the meeting on a monthly basis always hear me talk about our general fund. That's our general operations that pay for our fire, police, and general public safety. That's not infrastructure or streets, so that's not in here. We're looking at, the funds that we concentrated on was the motor fuel tax fund, which Trustee McGreeh just broke out for you. We actually get, on an annual basis, about an average of 230,000 in motor fuel tax, of which some of that goes to fund some of the labor for our public works, operations. But we actually have some money available to deal with street improvements, and this, since these are state funds, we can only utilize them on state-approved projects which relates to street improvements. So we can't use them on water, but we can use them on streets. Y'all starting to understand the split off that we're dealing with? We also looked at the water and sewer fund. That's our Fund 50, which all of you all participate with on a monthly basis when you pay your water and sewer bill on a timely basis, which we thank you for very much. That's our one enterprise fund in which the village does accumulate. We'll be talking on that more. And then the other fund looking at is the Roosevelt Road TIF fund. We get, on average, about 600,000, but again, because it's TIF money, it's only qualified, certain qualified expenses, and we also deal with other economic development. We're trying to bring businesses to develop. So we can't use everything in there, but we can tap into some of it. With that being said, the approach we're taking, first of all, we're going to tap in and use the current cash we have on hand in these certain funds. The next thing is, we're going to look for any free money available and other words, grant monies. The third thing is, is to tap into any available low interest borrower that we can do from the state, which is Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. And our last step then would be to actually utilize a bond issue where we would use our water and sewer revenues to finance the bond. So with that being said, note that we start, and I need to find 26.3 million in a hurry. First thing I do is utilize cash. And what we're going, what we're actually proposing to do is use about 5.9 million dollars in cash that the village currently has on hand. 3 million out of our, out of our TIF fund, 800,000 out of our motor fuel tax fund, and 2.9 million out of our water fund. So we're going to use 5.9 in cash that we have on hand. Next thing we'll do is to tap into a grant funding. That's the Economic Development Agency grant that Engineer Goomis just referred to. That grant is only to be used in industrial areas, just industrial and commercial areas. Am I got that correctly? And this grant actually requires the villages that receive it to actually match. So it ain't just free money. Government says they'll give you a dollar, but you have to put up a dollar equally. So of that 1.1 million, I mean, other 2.1 million that we're talking about in the water fund, 1.1 of that is our matching for our grant fund if we get the grant. The next area we're going to tap into is the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency loan. They actually give, and this is only for the use of water, of course, and we're anticipating borrowing 2 million. It'd be a 20-year payback loan, low interest, about 2%, and it would equate to about 120,000 a year which we would pay for out of our water fund. With all of that being said, utilizing the cash, the free grant money, and low interest money, that still leaves us with 17.3 million dollars that we need to borrow. Everybody with me so far? All righty, so let's talk about what that means. I need to, if the village is to actually net out 17.3 million dollars, we can't just borrow 17.3 million dollars. Anyone who's ever done any type of debt instrument realizes that there are closing costs that are associated with it, and typically with municipalities and governments, we are required to put at least one year, equivalent to a one-year payment, into reserves that we can't touch that whole time, so it's like collateral. So in order to borrow 17.3 million, I mean, to actually net 17.3 million, the village would have to borrow 19.3, what, 19,360,000 dollars. Paying that back over a 25-year period at 5.5 Paying that back over a twenty-five-year period at a five-point-five percent interest rate, we have an annual payment of about one point four million, one million, three-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand. That's how much our annual payment would be. But the banks don't just let you forecast and plan to be able just to make your payments. They wanna be able, you have to show that you'll be able to make these payments for the period of time. So we actually have to actually show forecast of revenues at one point seven million to assure the bank that we'll be able to make the one point three million dollar payment annually. Did everybody get that? Alrighty. On the other side is looking at, at a minimum, if we did not try to do everything but just address the residential area, which is eleven point three million, we'd have to borrow twelve point six million. Our annual payment would be nine hundred, I mean, eight-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand, six hundred and three dollars. But that means that we need to generate one million, one hundred and seventeen dollars a year for the next twenty-five years to actually be able to secure that account. So keep those numbers in mind. You need to be able to raise on an annual basis net cash of one point seven million to pay for everything, or at least one point one million to pay for the residential. Y'all got those numbers burnt in your head? Next time. Now, so the question is, can we afford to do that with a water rate increase? Well, showing you the last six years of our water fund and what our net cash flow is. Back in two thousand and seven, it was two-hundred-and-fifty-nine. We've been doing a lot better, and it's been getting increased, but as you can see, as you go across, two thousand and ten being the highest year is seven-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand. And with current, our current budget is to end this current year at seven-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand. Neither one of them would be enough to finance either one of the options. Remember, I need one point seven to do everything, one point one to do at least the residential. So bottom line is, to do what we need to do, we need to increase some water rates. So with that being said, I wanted to just make one note before I get into what y'all probably asking, how much it really gonna cost? Just wanna put it into perspective for those of you all who have been looking at your water bills and tracking it. Just wanna know, since two thousand and nine, the city of Chicago has increased their rates every year except for one. The Village of Broadview has not. We have not passed that on to you. In two thousand and nine, the city of Chicago increased their rates fifteen percent. Village of Broadview rates remain the same. They increased another fourteen percent in two thousand and ten. We continue to absorb that increase and no rate increase. Two thousand and eleven, they didn't increase, and we also remained the same. And last year, they did increase when they increased twenty-five percent. And with the knowledge of our future plans in the infrastructure, we did make the executive decision to actually enact a standard ordinance that's been in place since two thousand and three. The board in two thousand and three actually passed an ordinance that allows the village to pass on increases automatically without your consent for any time the city of Chicago increases. We hadn't been exercising that. But in two thousand and twelve, we, when they did increase, we did only pass on the cost, so we didn't increase it beyond that the city of Chicago is having. And note that the city of Chicago has already informed us that they're gonna increase another fifteen percent for the next three years. There will be slight increases to the citizens if we do nothing for the next three years. Everybody with me? So with that being said, what would it cost for us to do what we wanna do? The first scenario is...
Last question.
I think questions are gonna be held to the end of the, to the, to the presentation, sir. Alright, the first scenario, I'm showing you three scenarios in which, we did have multiple scenarios, but these are the three that it boiled down to the selection that the mayor and the board will eventually have to consider and decide, hopefully with, or with your concurrence. The first scenario is, what would it take to actually be able to afford to fund phase one? That will require us to increase our building rates by forty-one percent this year. And if we do that, we're talking about a unit price rate. Don't shoot the messenger, I'm just informing you all. We're talking about two dollars and eight cents a unit that it's costing. So that's what it would, it would require for us to be able to move forward the entire phase one. The next scenario, Tom, is looking at, what would it take for us to at least be able to address the residential areas in phase, in phase one? Or borrow eleven point three million. We'd have to increase your rates twenty point five percent, which would equate to about a dollar and, oh, dollar and four cents a unit. That would allow us to address all the needs in the residential area, at least, that's in phase one. The third scenario that we actually looked at is actually addressing the entire thing but not giving, not applying the increase out of all at one time. This proposes to do, like the city of Chicago does announce to you all that we will increase fifteen percent for three consecutive years. If we did that, it would allow us to increase, we'd have to wait about a year. But you see, year one, my free cash flow is still under a million, but by year two, we've reached the status where we could do the residential portion, and by year three, we'd be able to afford the remaining portion of phase one. So basically, we have, it'd be deferred, addressed into the, to the plans, and we would eventually do it, but we'd have to do it in two pieces. So that's what our three scenarios is. The pros and the cons. The obvious pro is that if we did scenario number one, increasing your rates forty-one percent, we'd be able to finance our entire capital plan. The con, obviously to you all, is that it would be a significant financial impact to you. We are aware of that. So I'm just putting it out there on the table. Tom? Looking at scenario two, if we increase twenty point five percent, we could finance the portion of the residential portion. And one of the other pros is it'd have an impact to you all, but it'd be less of an impact than the forty-one percent, of course. The con is that the village would still need to pursue other funding sources to be able to fund the remaining industrial, commercial, infrastructure needs that we have. And there are some areas that we could look at. We can look at committing additional TIF dollars. We can look at additional low-income loans if they become available, but we'd be going in knowing that we need to find more areas to fund them. We wouldn't have all the money. The pros and cons of the last one, scenario three, fifteen percent annually over the next three years, Tom. The pro is, it would, we could finance phase one in its entirety, both, but the funding would be done in progressive increments. The impact to the customers would be progressive. The con is that the capital project, capital improvement project would have to be deferred for at least another year. And what that does is expose the village to increasing costs, because all of our estimates now is based on our cost of money now. The estimates that the engineer give us now, this twenty-six million, might not be twenty-six million in a year or two from now, just the cost of money. Our borrowing strength might not be the same as it is right now. It might be more money. So that is the risks, pros and cons, both ways, and that's pretty much a scenario of the financial impact. And that just leaves the board with some scenarios, with your input, they'll be able to make a decision, and we move forward. Thank you.
Kevin stepped away, here he comes. But what you need to understand from this is that it's something that must be done. I made a couple of notes and listened to this, you know, and I know it must be that I'm crazy to be talking about this at election time, obviously, water rates and, but I just wanna do the right thing for you guys. At the end of the day, I just wanna do the right thing. And only can, and I can only mention two towns that will let you know why I wanna do the right thing. That's Crestwood and Saltwood. I'm gonna turn this over to Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Jan. Very informative information that we've been waiting for. By now, I'm sure all of you all have a lot of questions, and we ask that you hold your questions to the end when you have a session in which we will entertain your questions. If you hold your hand up now, we have someone that's gonna pass around a form that's gonna ask for your name, phone number, address, email, and that way we can have you come up and ask your questions in the orderly fashion. Some might be duplicates, and we'll try to put those together so that only one person is asking that question and not repeating them. You may not get to all of your questions and answers tonight, however, those that we do get to will entertain at the end of all of the questions. Those that we're not able to get to, including the ones that we do get to, we're gonna post those answers on our website for all to see. I wanna give a special thanks tonight to Mr. Tom Hood, our budget officer, who is working the projector tonight. He also had a big part in helping put this beautiful slide presentation tonight together for you. So thank you, Mr. Hood. Again, if you want to ask questions or comment at the end, hold your hand up, and someone will be around to give you a form. And you can just keep them up or keep them low, and as you see them coming around, stick it up, okay? Without further ado, at this time, I'd like to bring on Mr. Matt Ames, our public works director. He's gonna talk a little bit more about our pipe systems and give you real detailed information about what's going on with our pipes. Mr. Ames.
Thank you, trustee Kevin McGree. Hello, everyone. Good evening. I recognize a lot of faces. A lot of faces are new to me. I don't know if you're homeowners or not, but this informational forum is specific to get our facts. Unfortunately, we've been bombarded with half-truths, scare tactics, and the whole nine yards. I'm the guy that opposed the referendum. I objected to it for a couple reasons. But to see some of the individuals that signed their name on that referendum, not in attendance here tonight, to me, a shame. When you know better, you do better. Before the night is out, there's a couple things that we're gonna disseminate, we're gonna pass out. Okay? One's not gonna cost you anything. The other one will cost you your signature. For those individuals that constantly call the village hall with concerns about their water bills, saying that it's extremely high for whatever reason, and they seem to feel like they're getting an inaccurate read, we've actually gone into some of our residents' homes and helped them determine that they have leaks in the toilets, you know? And a leaky toilet can, in essence, create a hundred, a two-hundred-dollar water bill. So over there, in those boxes, and the women will be passing them out, there's Karen Reynolds and y'all, are some things that I gathered right out of, actually, your town, Sam. And these are leak detectives' daisies. These are basically dyes that you put in your tank of the toilet, and you observe to see whether or not the dye shows up in the bowl. The instructions are here, okay? So please follow the instructions. You don't wanna put it in without following the instructions, I promise you. Okay? So let me say that more than six hundred residents gave me the vote of confidence back in two thousand and nine in the local elections. You elected me trustee before Mayor Jones appointed me directing public works. And I've spent the last four years attempting to quantify the vote that you gave me by upholding the professional standards of the office and overseeing the men and women who are dedicated to providing excellent service to our town. Sometimes in spite of challenges, we stood when the windstorms destroyed many of our trees, and you all had a demand for the tiny removal. The snowblows and the dump record snowfalls throughout the Chicago Lane area, and our response, that was sometimes handled by outdated equipment, that literally fell apart as we were out clearing our streets and alleys. And probably the most challenging of all was the floods that submerged several counties in Illinois, and the need to mitigate floodwaters that had damaged many of our homes. This department stood on post. We stood on post throughout pumping our basements and hauling away destroyed possessions. We did it to the delay of assisting our own families, having the smallest budget of our emergency response, which includes our fire and our police. Kudos to those guys. We still were able to operate and perform those services within our statutory guidelines. Now, I don't know about you, but I'd be willing to put that record up against any predecessor or any counterpart or any neighboring community. And if they're not impressed, at the very least, you should acknowledge the efforts. Thank you. But I'm also aware that there's some that have taken up residency here, that if we were to give them a brick of gold, they would say it was too heavy. Notwithstanding the critics, we are determined to continue our excellent service. You know, you gotta see us out on a daily basis, but you don't know a lot of the public works initiatives that included the resurfacing of our state highways, Seventeenth Avenue, Roosevelt Road, Surma Road, the water main replacements in the streetscape from Eighteenth Avenue or Seventeenth Avenue, Number Twenty-Third on Roosevelt Road. These are public works initiatives. The fifty-fifty sidewalk replacement, the senior snow removal, the local business enterprise and minority business enterprise goal participation, which basically says that if you're gonna come to Broadview as a prime contractor and do work, you have to look within the community to find somebody to participate. I don't care if you go to TruValley and buy a box of screws or Home Depot or use XYZ printing service. You will not come into the village without consideration for the taxpayers, residents, and businesses here, and think that you will extract the money and take it elsewhere. It was a public works initiative for the multifamily trash collection. And while there was some criticism as to what we have received thanks from those multifamily property owners, because, hey, what it did was provide a service at a comparable cost, okay? And it eliminated the need for them to pay extra when these individuals come to Broadview and they fly down the move-outs. It's all inclusive in the contract. The uniform collection of the toilets, that's a public works initiative. One of the first things that I did when I came into office was to ask the mayor for permission to have a conversation with group, and along with trustee Kevin McGree, we sat down, and we increased the services, A. We reduced the disposal service, B. And if nothing else, we got our village looking somewhat decent. House connection, which for me is probably one of the most things that I'm most proud of. And this was something that we, as I said, struggled with for close to a year, the legal ramifications and making sure that if nothing else, there was no impact to the businesses that would cause them to vacate. However, it's a federal and state mandate. And basically, what it says is that when we give you the water, you can't give it back to us. If there's a water main break two blocks down, and you just happen to have a fifty-five-gallon drum with a hose bead going into it, and in that drum is some type of toxins, acoustics, guess what happens? It gets sucked back into the line that you and I drink from. So that program, and I'm glad to say, has seen complacency with ninety-nine percent of our businesses here. Thank God. The solid program that you see up and down Roosevelt Road, when I say that, we've invited the business owners that wanna enhance their business... When I say that, we've invited the business owners that wanna enhance their business, beautify it, so that they can attract more business. The village board saw fit to accept that line of thinking. And add to that, just from these things, we created an annual revenue stream of approximately $150,000. Now, I don't know about anybody else, but Public Works is not in the business of making money. But this is just good sense, common sense business. That's it. Things that with a little enforcement, with a little detail, can not only suit the end user, but most certainly the taxpayer and residents here in Broadview. And I need to make it very, very clear that nothing was accomplished without the direction of Mayor Sherman Jones and most certainly the help of most of the board members. Most of the board members. And for anybody that don't know, Matt Ames in this Public Works Department is working the pleasure of Mayor Sherman Jones. So, we're gonna bring the guys up in just a second. The mayor and I, we share some of the same philosophies and that is, is that you don't have to take the lead on everything. And this is, I mean, from a part of the speech that our president gave. And what you do is you create coalitions and conditions for the success of others. And I've attempted to do that in Public Works. I know we've got some bright men and women that service you all. And rather than try and be detailed as to what it is that they do, I will, if nothing else, lay out an agenda of what it is we need to accomplish and I'll link you to their own demands. So, if in fact, for those residents that call down to Public Works and you send their cards and I get them and I thank you for them, the men and women that you see on a daily basis are the reason why Public Works operates the way that we do. So, let's go to some photographs, Tom. Obviously, we have a view of the village map and it highlights the water mains. Some of our more significant mains are along Gardner Road. We have a 12-inch there. 25th Avenue, we have a 12-inch. But the one that I'm most concerned about is on Roosevelt Road. A couple of years ago, the first boil water alert or order that was issued in my tenure occurred from a break on the 12-inch line in front of the fire department. And it caused so much stress on the distribution system. We lost so much water in such a short period of time. We had to issue a boil water order as a precautionary measure. Anytime our pressure in the system drops below 20 PSI, which is 20 pounds a square inch, the IPA mandates that we put out a boil water order as a precautionary measure. Now, until the samples that we pull after the repair is made and sent over to the lab comes back to say that there's no colorforms, no pathogens, no contaminants in the water, we have to uphold that alert or that order. That concerned me. So, immediately I asked the mayor and the board to figure out a way to start replacing the transmission mains up and down Roosevelt Road next time. And just recently, you all received a boil water order. And we disseminated that via the reverse 911. We want to thank our fire department, our fire chief. We were out knee-deep in the water and we asked them to put that out. And that's the easiest way for us to contact our residents, you know? We get phone calls from people that were coming in from work. Well, I didn't hear anything about it and I didn't get it on my... I didn't get a phone call and, and, you know, yada, yada, this and yada, yada, that. If you're not signed up for the reverse 911 emergency call-out, meaning that if there's something of significance that happens here in the village, you receive the message. I would suggest that you sign up. If not tonight, then first thing tomorrow. You can do it a couple of weeks. You can go to the website. There's a link down at the bottom that allows you to do it. But you can go to the fire department. The fire department will sign you up. But over the last month, we've had three significant breaks on Roosevelt Road. Now, we're talking about water loss and we're talking about finances. But those three breaks in the duration of seven minutes, we lost close to, and the 600,000 gallons is inaccurate. Close to a million gallons, okay? So, we're paying the city of Chicago for water that's literally going down the storm drains and into Addison Creek, into the Spreys River and so forth and so on, simply because our pipes are failing. Let's go, Tom. Let's go. And we took over. Our water main system cost, meaning our water repair cost, was reduced, obviously, I believe, by close to 57%. 57%. But it's steadily climbing. It's on the rise for obvious reasons. Next time. Next time. This is the break, one of the breaks that occurred on Roosevelt Road in front of Lee's daycare center. Next. Just to give you a visual, as I say, a picture's worth a thousand words. A lot of the times, you guys are safe in your home or way of work, transporting your kids back and forth to school. So, you don't get to see on a daily basis exactly what it is that we do by way of operation. Next. This is a trench, 16-inch. Keep going. I think I can get a big ear. Keep going.
Don't vote, Phil.
Next. Okay? And this is the most recent break. Now, let me tell you about this break. I got, I think, one of the best plumbers in the state of Illinois, in Gino's Plumbing, happens to be a local contractor and he helps us. But when this break occurred, we sleeved it. And typically what we do is we put a sleeve on the break because it is probably the least expensive way to repair it. If the sleeve holds up, we backfill it, we restore it, and we go on. We did that to this location twice before we ended up having to do a section replacement, meaning literally cut a whole section out. Let's go. Keep going. That's a sleeve. Let me see here. That's what the sleeve looks like, the galvanized silver piece. Keep going, Tom. Let me get your wheels set down. Can you all sit on your ears? Let's go, Tom. Okay. But obviously, as you can see, this is not an easy undertaking. Yeah. Next time. To show you the scale, I asked Sam Soppel to put his foot up against the 16-inch main. And the break is somewhere around here. But the break is roughly the size of your fist. It doesn't take a great big rupture to lose that amount of water. It takes something as small as the size of your fist for us to lose a million gallons of water in the course of seven, seven minutes. Next time. He's pointing to it. And this is what the actual main looked like when we cut it and pulled it out. The section replacement is the piece right behind it. Next time. Obviously, we gotta cover it, backfill it. Next. Next. And this is what it looks like now. And the reason I decided not to put fresh concrete over this was for obvious reasons. I don't know if it's gonna break again. And if it does, I don't want to have to tear up brand-new concrete to get back down to it. So, we're gonna sit back and we're gonna observe it for a while, along with our water operators that operate our distribution system from Tins Avenue that provides to Broadview, Westchester, Heinz, Loyola, and Magnus. We're constantly in communication with them to find out exactly what our tank is doing, what our pressure is doing. Are there any abnormalities? Next time. And obviously, okay? So, when the engineer Jim Gomez talked about how the five-day capital plan was formulated and put together, he's absolutely right. Street conditions was the deciding factor why. Because what we tried to do was find an area in Broadview where we had breaks consistently. The pins represent water main breaks. The different color pins, I believe. What do we have? We got a red. I don't, it's a little fuzzy. But we got a red for 2009, green for 2010, yellow for 2011, black to 2012, and I believe we're on blue already. But as you can see, we can't say, okay, we're gonna just do this area because this is the area of the most main breaks. Our main breaks are occurring from the Beverly area to the Harvester area to the Gold Coast, 80 acres and everywhere in between, okay? For those of you that don't know, you live in Burial. So, Broadview is the laid-out Burial. And that's how we identify. The police have beats. They call Beat 1 is 80 acres, Beat 2 and so forth and so on. So, if you're not familiar with where you live, you can actually find it, I believe, on our website with Gino's Trash Pickup. They tell you exactly where you can pick it up and they tell you the area that you're living in. So, next time. This is a letter I want to read to you all. And this came to my email just yesterday, as a matter of fact. I got a lot of stuff here, you all. Thank you. And the letter says, "Mr. Ames," and this is from the Lake Michigan Management Section of the Water Department. "Mr. Ames, one of the departments concerned in running our Lake Michigan water allocation program is good water conservation. And our most important tool to ensure good conservation of Lake Michigan water is our 8% unaccounted-for flow standard." The Village of Broadview reported on the 2011s and 2012 LMO, and this is a report that we have to file annually with this compliant agents to let them know exactly what's going on in the Village of Broadview as it relates to water consumption, water usage, and again, unaccounted-for water. But the standard is 8%. Therefore, the department requires the Broadview submit a compliance plan, which they will implement to reduce their UFF unaccounted-for flow below the department's 8% standard. This compliance plan should include a timed schedule to return to compliance with the 8% standard as soon as possible. I didn't share this with you, Jim. And this plan should be submitted to the department by March the 1st. So, they want to know what we're gonna do about our water main breaks as much as we do. Probably more so. Next time. Next. 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 Okay, these are some of the things that we're next. Stop. And Ron, can I get the lights off? So, our last reporting above that 8% standard is at 20%. We're at 20% of unaccounted-for water. So, I looked out here at some of the faces when the finance director was talking about water rate increases and so forth and so on. If you're prepared to move from Broadview, it shouldn't concern you. But if in fact, you have brought a home and you plan to be here for a while, something's gotta be done. Now, I don't want to pay any additional costs for my water bill, but I understand the necessary evil, as they call it. Something that as homeowners, we have to be accountable for. Homeownership is more than just making a mortgage off. It's keeping our streets clean and safe. It's making sure our infrastructure is, that's what I said, in place for our children, our grandchildren, because most homeowners, what do they do? They leave a legacy, you know? We leave the house to your kids. We might go to Arizona, live in the sun, you know, save your beloved. But I'm gonna conclude by asking the individuals that work at Public Works to stand up and be recognized. These are the men and women over here on the left. As you can see, our manager is Mr. Ed Walker, this is the phone, and does some administrative work in the office. Larry Gates is our department foreman. Oh, we'll get to her. We have Mr. Sam Soppel. Sam has been with the Village of Broadview for more than 30 years. We have Jeffrey Glenn and who I consider the most valuable person in hell, and that's John Schichfeldt. That's simply because of the age of my vehicles. And this guy keeps everything running. We have Jason Dante. We have Martin Chapman, Anton Will. We have Ray Allright. And we have Gino and Chris Maricas with Gino's Plumbing. These are the individuals that make sure that the water is safe, to make sure that the flow comes from your house and is not bad. And we're gonna get to that because I've got phone calls about the flood here recently. And the individuals that are responsible to make sure that the trees are not toppling over and some other issues that we have going on in the village. So, once again, for all of you that acknowledge Public Works and you call me and you send me cards, thank you. But it's because of these individuals, okay? Everybody knows Karen. So, she needs no introduction. These are the photographs. She don't see them. Just scan through it real fast because I want to talk about some of the evils that we got going on here. And that is the graffiti that was on our Shore Park swimming pool, graffiti that was just right outside here on our stop sign. Everywhere in between Broadview, we've had graffiti. We've had gang activity. The point that I'm trying to make is that we've got some undesired ones trying to move into the Village of Broadview. They're trying to take over the Village of Broadview. And I know a whole lot of you have heard a whole lot of things. And one thing that I don't appreciate, and that is the criticism from what I call cowards. I'm right here. In other words, I'm not gonna blob and call myself Roosevelt Road watcher, unregistered. Because the only way that we can honestly have a sincere dialogue is that I know who I'm talking to. And you the same way. The only way that we're ever gonna resolve our issues is to have a frank and honest conversation. It don't start with throwing a stone and hiding it in your hand. It does not start with misinforming folks. So, I want to talk about some facts. And what, to me, as a taxpayer homeowner, turns my stomach. Now, for those of you that have been at the village hall for the last couple of weeks because of these elections that are coming up and this circus that's going on up there in terms of who can be on the ballot, who can't be on the ballot, and so forth and so on, it's an expense to you, Miss McGree. It's an expense to me. It's an expense to you, Mr. McGree, and every other taxpayer homeowner here unnecessarily. And the sad thing about it is it's being orchestrated by those outside of you, individuals that don't have an equity stake here. That's a fact. Talk about some of that. Many of you know about the strip club and their desire to get it. And I gotta be honest with you. I know them quite well because back in 2009... Because back in 2009, they came and they said, hey, Matt, we would like to, nothing else, contribute to your campaign because we want to see good government. Or, was I letting them boozle? And I learned two things from that. One, don't accept the support of anybody that's in opposition with somebody else. If they want to support you because they want to support you because they think it's the right thing to do, I'm all for that. But if they're supporting you because they're in opposition to somebody else, there's a trick to it.
What does this have to do with our, uh, the cost of our water going up?
Well, thank you, Ms. Darling. Uh, but right now, I got the mic. And that being said, I do feel that it's necessary for the taxpaying homeowners here to be well aware of exactly what's going on and who's orchestrated this concerted effort. Because there is concerted efforts. And it includes organized crime outside the Village of Broadview, the strip club entity, and some elected officials. As a matter of fact, the information that I have in my hand is factual and I will not talk about nothing that I cannot prove. As a matter of fact, remaining available, I took the liberty of FOIA, which is the Freedom of Information. In other words, I requested this information and if you don't know what's going on behind the scenes, you don't know what to ask for. And you have a right to know who's trying to get into your community. You have a right to know exactly what's going on. So, Ms. Darling, if you don't want to hear it, I respectfully say you can set off about fifteen minutes. Because it is my home, it is my investment. It is my taxes that these people are playing with. And the individuals that are playing with it are not like me and you, Mr. Brown. They don't contribute to the park district or the library or the village hall, no services, they don't. So, yes, it is personal. So, that being said, sir, what I do know is that the Dave Donahues, they're still around. This article highlights exactly what their blueprint was. It was written by a Tribune reporter. You can pick everything up in the top of it by right over here. Okay? So, the, but once again, I don't hurl accusations without supporting what it is that I say. That's what the problem is with us. Because we want to believe anything, we go for the banana in the tailpipe. You don't know that individuals have collectively come together to undermine exactly what it is that we're hoping to achieve, and that is a wholesome community. My family has been out here for forty seven years. So, Mr. Brown, when you say it's personal, absolutely. When they come back in town to visit, guess what they call home? Broadview. When my grandbabies come by to visit and ride their bikes to the school grounds, it's next to them. It's home. So, it is personal. And if it's not to you, mm. The Dave Donahues and the strip club individuals have a blueprint. What they usually do is they go into a town and they find all of these weak ordinances and they find one or two local officials that will be friendly to them. And their hope is that after a whole lot of charade going back and forth, they will create this fear that you're violating my constitutional rights. As Mayor Sam Poydus said, it is their First Amendment right to be able to operate such a business here in the Village of Broadview or anywhere else in the state of Illinois. And in doing so, they tell you that unless you settle with us, we're gonna run ten million dollars or more. And of course, the local officials that they have in their pockets say, you know, we need to settle this thing because it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a loss for all of us. And that's not the case. Pick up the documents. As far as, uh, this circus in our village hall, many of you heard that Mayor Sherman Jones wouldn't be on the ballot. I know I heard. He wasn't gonna be on the ballot. And the reason this information got out there was because the individuals, they knew that he was a federal employee. And as a federal employee, he couldn't run in a partisan election. So, what did they do? They created a Democratic slate. I got it. Get it. And this slate has only individuals that are ain't not even registered in the Village of Broadview, don't live here. But the way they was able to pass it by was because somehow they got the clerk's office. And this sat in the clerk's office until after the deadline for the objections. Because he had you, me, or anybody else with any common sense, I know about this. What we would have done was say, hey, wait a minute, this is not right. This is not right. And when I looked at this petition and I saw individual names on it that I knew, I said, Smith, what are you, you signed? Yes, I did, baby. They came to my door. And she described exactly who it was. And she said that I know the name on the ticket, the lady that ran with y'all in the last election. The sad thing about it is is that everybody that circulated these petitions are from the deep south side. Eighty-one-on-one South Campbell. We got folks from Calumet City. Nobody that circulated these petitions are from the Village of Broadview. This is the chicanery that's being perpetrated on you, the taxpayers. This is it. So, you tell me. How sad is that? Well, what they wasn't banging on was the mayor having thirty-two years of service in the bill. And what they wasn't banging on is the fact that he had already made up in his mind that he would retire. Okay? And thank God you did, man. I'm serious. You know, I didn't want to use this form for this, I didn't. But I wrestled with this for several months. And the only thing I can write you too is when Jennifer said it was like fire and shit up in my bones. And I'm gonna tell it to you so I can sleep with you at night. So, if you don't like it, I understand. But I gotta do it to me. I understand. Right, I know. Some of you don't like the mayor or the people around them just simply because, it ain't because of a record. Because the man has a record in his administration of providing a surplus. Own, own line that had a surplus for two consecutive years. Something that the village has not had in over thirteen years. And then I'm just thinking, what? It's okay, I get that. This is a democracy, vote for who you want to vote for. But don't undermine the process. To me, I think everybody should be on the ballot. I think all those candidates that sit in office should be on the ballot. That's just me. And it's up to them to qualify or disqualify themselves. Maybe you all not follow. But the most unsavory thing is the fact that one of our elected officials has engaged in deceptive practices. Now, when you elect an individual to an office of trust, you expect them to do the right thing. You expect them to, nothing else, if, I don't care, we can, we can disagree. But we can afford to be disagreeable. Most certainly in this country. So, I have a problem. One of our trustees run up in excess of thirty-one thousand dollars. Turn it off for me, please. And more than thirty-one thousand dollars in legal bills running to the AG with accusations about the mayor, his department heads, and everybody else. I have a problem with that. I have a problem with a renegade trustee running up thirty-one thousand dollars in legal bills for taxpayers like me and you to go down to a federal court to try and intervene in the village's defense against this strip club. Right here. And the sad thing about it is, is after the federal judge says, you know something? I look and I see that the village is providing an adequate defense. There is nothing that you can tell me by way of it. I will resubmit a motion to reconsider. What? Are you kidding me? And the, the truth is, is that this trustee don't even pay taxes. Got no house? Not a business? Nothing. This is a fact. I've got the documents over there. You don't know what you're looking for, but I do. And I made it available for you. So, you're right, Ms. Darling, it is personal. When you take my hard-earned money and you throw it away like that, it is personal, Mr. Brown. And it should be personal to you. It should be. Because at the end of the day, at the end of the day, I think we all want the same thing. At least most of us do. I take that back, not all of us. Some of us want, uh, how should I say? They want a title. Maybe they want a payoff. And I can say what you say. Why? Because I've been accused of everything except hurting these little tribes. Everything. I've had to stand before the State Board of Elections, the State's Attorney, the, uh, uh, AG's office and answer questions as it relates to the operations of the village and, and my involvement here, there, and the other. And guess what? I know you have all heard that Matt Ains and the man, the rest of them is going to jail. But guess what? I'm sitting here. Not even backing on the damn thing. It's always these figures that I'm seeing on the top. But it's hard for me to sit up and board with you and have to listen to this garbage being spewed out and know the facts. And the fact is, you have to be attentive to the Village of Broadview. And I'm gonna tell you like the man I told the strip club four years ago, get out of Broadview. Better yet, get the hell out of Broadview. So, I'm sorry I offended anybody. So, I'm gonna get off the mic right now. But, but please, don't take my word for it. As they say, when you fail to investigate, you forfeit your right to speak. The information is readily available. You read it. You discern. I'm not trying to make your mind up for you. My job is to provide a service. It's to provide a fact. And I can promise you one thing. Tonight, it's gonna be good. It's off my chest.
Thank you, Mr. Ains. So, by now, I'm sure a lot of people have questions. If you already have not filled out a form, we will still accept them when we have selected, uh, a couple of the questions that will be answered tonight. We will continue to collect these forms. Please continue to hold your hand up if you need a form. Mr. Buchanan will, uh, come and give you the form and collect it right away so we can get them and try to entertain as many as possible. We hope to do that as expeditiously, as, as, as expeditiously as possible and get you out of here so we can get dinner and rest as I'm tired. At this time, I would like to bring the primary one last final time to do a couple of closing statements. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Uh, Tom, would you come up to the front? Uh, Jim, come on up to the front, I need you guys in the front chairs. You guys are the ones that are gonna be answering both of these questions, I'm pretty sure. Got some hands up out here in the, uh, in the crowd, Greg. You know, I'm back there, a couple over on this side. You know, I had a, uh, a speech prepared, but, uh, my time got cut short by the Reverend Ains. He got kind of passionate there for a bit, so... You know, I'm, I'm gonna be very, very brief. As it relates to what Mr. Ains said, all of that stuff can be verified by documentation. There, there's no allegations or any windows or anything he said. And I wasn't expecting him to go off on a tangent like that, but, oh, well. But I want to say this to you all, quite honestly. You know, I only got involved in politics, I enjoyed my private life. Believe me, I did. You know, I, I don't like people looking, looking up my rear microscope at every turn that I go through. But I got involved in this to help and to try to provide the village with better services than it had received prior to my arrival. So, I just let you all know, I'm here to serve you, I work for you, I toil for you. You know, this is, this is a toil from a town that I've lived in since nineteen sixty-two. And it, it pains me to go through a lot of the changes that we've gone through over recent years about disagreements and misperceptions. This particular informational forum was in line with exactly what I promised to the Woods was, be very transparent and let you know exactly what we're doing, what the plan is, what the challenges are, and how it impacts you directly or indirectly. Because it could be your parents you're here for, it could be other families you're here for, or it could be yourself. So, the issue at hand tonight is our water and streets infrastructure. And I'm gonna get back to the primary mission of tonight's meeting, which is our water and streets infrastructure. And that's why we had the professionals here. That's why the presentation was done. And that's what we're here to talk about. Because at some point in time, it's going to have to be addressed. The cost is only gonna go up if we delay it any longer. The cost of water is gonna go up. The cost of materials is gonna go up. The cost of money is going to go up. The cost of labor is going to go up. This is a fact. This we know. If we delay it any longer, the integrity of the system is going to get worse. The breaks are gonna become more free. You saw the slide that showed how much we were spending prior to us getting in and the fact that the cost of, of the repairs had gone down. Most of that is attributed to us changing the personnel that actually did the repairs, uh, and the cost went down. Most of it was attributed to how we went around trying to make preventative measures, put preventative measures in place. And that's your Public Works Department. These guys are all local guys, they're all from around here. You see them, they're your neighbors, they're your friends, and they're in the area. So, don't, don't be mistaken. Uh, do we have the questions ready, Kevin? Okay, I'm gonna get the mic back to Kevin. I'll take you with, uh, you got the mic up there. Anybody else got questions? Anyone else? Okay, yeah.
Okay, um, I have a couple of questions that we've already identified.
Let's get to the questions.
And, um, as they come in, we're gonna continue to, uh, distribute. But the first question comes from C. Ingram. I'm gonna ask C. Ingram at, uh, twenty-three thirteen eighteen. Come up to the mic, please take your name, and, um, we'll, we'll try to get your question answered as quickly as possible. Thank you. Is C. Ingram here?
Yeah.
Cheryl, Cheryl Ingram? She left? Okay. All right, well, we'll, we'll move on to the next question. I can actually read it, um, because this one is legible. This is from Andrew Van Ays from Van Nuys. His question is, our business needs a long-term plan for rates in order to invest in additional facilities in town. How, how does a business in town get insurable, insurable insurance on rates long-term? We won't insert, invest anymore in town without that assurance. What will the rates be over the next three years, he asked? What will the rates be over the next three years?" he asks.
The answer to the question is actually dependent upon the scenarios in which, the three scenarios on which we gave. On the scenario one, if the board does choose to go with immediate addressing the financing, we're talking about a forty-one percent increase in year one, and then subsequent years will only be the increase as it relates to what comes for the city of Chicago. So, that equates to about five percent annually after that. That's only what the city of Chicago passes on. But the village would increase forty-one percent. If the, if scenario two is selected, then we would increase the water rates, water sewer rates by twenty-point-five percent. And in subsequent years, it would only be the cost increase passed on by the city of Chicago, which equates to about a five percent increase annually. And lastly, if we do the third scenario for the next three years, two thousand thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, the water rates would increase fifteen percent annually. And that would include and absorb the city of Chicago increases.
One more thing, Mayor Emanuel, when he did announce these last round of rates, did say, this is what he said, that after these three big raises, there would be more of a cost of living type of increases after that. So, I mean, if they're passing on three to four percent in the city, it would be much smaller impacts on the village's rates.
Okay, I'm gonna ask some of you guys to come up and ask your own questions. I think we wanna hear from you instead of hearing my voice read your question. Ms. Francine Morell, have a question here.
My question is, why would our attorney allow the trustee to make her the cost, knowing that she is not an attorney, a CPA, a paralegal, or an actuary? I'd like to know why he should not eat the cost himself, or she should pay it?
Unfortunately, unfortunately, this individual waited until they were an elected official. And as such, would be covered by indemnity issue. While they profess to say they were a private citizen, in fact, they are an elected official. If the village attorney do not defend this, and the individual gets involved in multiplication, it opens up the village to further litigation, further potential lawsuits in this arena. That's the conundrum to be had. So, you've got an individual that apparently it was armed with certain information, but waited until after being sworn in and sitting in as a village trustee to take this action. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
But if our, if our village attorney knows that the questions that this person is proposing, why would he even allow it?
He can't stop anyone from doing anything.
But why didn't, why didn't he come to our board or to the mayor?
She filed in court. She went to court. The attorney had to represent the village's best interest in the court case.
I understand that, but I don't think you're answering my question. I understand. But it appears from what you're handing out is that this was an ongoing process. So, why did the attorney not approach the board or the mayor to inform them that soon as that went on, rather than to have the taxpayers come up with a...
That's a question they don't even trust the attorney to answer. You know, and I'm gonna move on. What's the next question, Kevin? Katrina? Who's the next one, Kevin? Katrina's coming up. Who's the next one? Sandra Bugg. Sandra Bugg in the building.
Good evening. My name is Katrina Thompson. My address is twenty-three thirty-three South Fifteenth Avenue. And the question that I have is the increase, is the increase on top of the twenty-five percent? Or is that all the forty-one percent is all together?
Under all three scenarios, the both increases is inclusive of the city of Chicago cost increase.
Sandra's turn. And it's McCoy. Sherman, you should know. My question is related to a meeting that we had before when they were talking about closing off access to the town drive coming off of Fifteenth and Sixteenth, those areas so that they don't have those drive-throughs. What is the status of that?
What she's referring to is the proposed cul-de-sac. As you're aware, we've got the signs right up at Seventeenth and the Expressway. And in that area, the eighty-eighth is the area which is historically known as the largest crime district in the village. It's being cul-de-sacred. It probably won't be done until the spring due to weather. But it's already been funded, so it's gonna happen. It's just coming up. It'll be cul-de-sacred off of Maywood at thirteen, at Lexington and Fillmore. And we'll be cul-de-sacred off from the town drive, Frontage Road along the Expressway at sixteen, fifteen, and fourteen.
Thank you.
Ms. Shirley Redman?
Here I come, Shirley. Here I come.
All right, thank you. I got a couple of comments. First of all, let me say thank you for having this meeting. Both of you that have been at the village meetings, I have been to the village meetings for the last two and a half years consistently. And I think, Mr. Mayor, trustees, I appreciate the job that you do, but I wanna tell you that I think this meeting should have come first before anything else, because I think this is giving us information that as a person who goes to a meeting, I didn't know in terms of, you know, whether it would cost forty-one percent or fifteen, whatever. I think that's good information, and I think as a resident, I can make a totally decision. I'm gonna ask another thing of you all. Can we, could those of us that want hard copies of whatever was presented, could we have it?
We have a slide presentation for... And we're gonna also make this available on the website in the near future.
I think that's great, okay. And then secondly, what I wanted to ask, here's the question. On the bonds at five-point-five percent, that's awfully high in terms of, and I know they're low, but that's a lot. And when you think about interest and it feeds, we're spending a lot, and that was my question. Can we get pivots so that we get the minimum that we need to pay and put more payment into, you know, more money into the street? I'm willing to pay what I have to pay. I'm not going anywhere. But I'm saying that I don't wanna see it go to interest either.
In answer to the question, where are the five-point-five percent? I'll address that. For those of you all who don't keep track of the village's finances, I should tell you that our standard of course rating is a triple B minus. For those who have credit scores, that's probably like a five-hundred, okay? The mayor would like for me to tell you how long it's been that way. I don't know, it was there before we came, and we have managed to address and maintaining it. And actually, if you read the standard of course overview, they do give a favorable indication as far as us taking the steps to improve. But the reason for the five-point-five percent? Lenders are charging more interest to Irish organization. And right now, that's us. So, that's the reason why. And he wanted full transparency, and that's the reason for it.
Okay, Josh Cheeks, can you raise your hand? Josh Cheeks?
Josh?
Is Josh Cheeks here? Okay, we're gonna move on to the next question. Is there Charles Garrick? Charles Garrick? Hello, Mr. Garrick.
There is you.
Right up front here. Here she comes, Mr. Garrick.
Yes, I just wanted to address the problem with the sewer system. What are they using? Are they using iron, PVC, or stainless steel?
For the sewer system, whenever we do repairs, we're using PVC. That has fewer joints and it's much better these days for root intrusion and other things. For the water main, anytime we put a new water main, we'll duct the iron pipe and like the old cast iron will split in the ground.
Okay, next we have first initial E, last name McDonald. E. McDonald?
My question is, have the villagers, the trustees, came up with ways of cutting other things out instead of raising? I mean, I understand we have to do the water and mains. What can we do to lower costs as it is? Everyone says, oh, it's only this amount, only this amount. But we had a diminishing returns. I mean, a lot of people are leaving, and a lot of people are forcing out because we buy this house ten years ago, you can afford it, and the taxes keep going up and up and up. And time is something more, something more and more. People are leaving, so you're going to have diminishing returns if you keep saying, well, this is just something that we have to do. But what can we cut? Can we stop raking the grass with the lawnmowers and things? Or something, I mean, something has to go because really, if you only have five dollars, pretty soon, it's going to be gone. And people are leaving this village else. That's probably why we have a B minus rating, because people are leaving. This place is unaffordable, though we keep putting on. I know there are cuts that can be made. Are we looking at cuts?
We have all of our residents in mind. And keep in mind, we're residents and taxpayers just like you. So, yes, we've looked at a lot of things that we can do better or efficiently. The mayor's task, his department is, we've looked at their department and running them as efficiently as possible. And as you probably heard in the presentation, we have run a surplus for the last two years straight. And it would have been three years had we not suffered a couple of years ago with the windstorms and the rainstorm, the floods. We actually went to Cook County and Mayor Polia from Westchester will tell you, he headed the line with trying to get monies from the state. And hadn't been able to do that, we could have run three years of surplus. But I'm gonna let the mayor speak more than, because he...
I think Kevin misunderstood your question. You're asking about cuts. When we got here, we cut a lot of things. We redid the entire police department. We restructured it. We're in the process of restructuring the fire department. We've already offered buyouts, so those are in the works. The fire team is here. We got a plan for a buyout in the fire department, the police department. We restructured the entire public works department. Excuse me? We're in the process, we restructured the entire public works department. And each and every department is running at budgets or below budget. In other words, they're all under budgeted and not spending even the money that's in budgeted form, which is how we finished with a surplus for the last couple of years. And that includes us purchasing a brand-new ambulance. That includes us purchasing two brand-new public works vehicles. Because we cannot cut employees, and we cannot cut that at the expense of service to the taxpayers. We still gotta clean the streets. We still gotta remove the snow. We still gotta provide police and fire service. They had already laid off a quarter of the police department and almost a third of the fire department. So, there is not much more for us to cut. We've cut as much as we can cut. And add to that, we deal with unionized personnel. You know, you've got the fire department, you've got the police department, you've got the TCOs. These are unions. They get paid union-scale wages. That is, and add to that, healthcare and health benefits for these individuals. There's a cost that's involved with that. Healthcare is expensive. So, the total compensation of someone making seventy-five or eighty thousand dollars a year may be a hundred and twenty thousand. Because add to their salary approximately, and you tell me if I... What's the number for the health benefits now? Twenty thousand per individual? And that's after we did... That was a twenty-four percent reduction after we went in and renegotiated our contracts with our healthcare provider. We were at thirty thousand dollars per person for healthcare. And we went back to them, and we renegotiated and got it down to twenty-four. We even went back to N.B. Bank and got better rates on the money that we have on deposit with N.B. Bank. We got to eliminate some of the charges to the villagers at N.B. Bank. So, we were cutting everywhere we can cut. But at some point in time, the rubber meets the road, and you don't have no other alternative but to raise prices on something. Something's gotta be paid somewhere. And when you guys talk about your taxes being raised, that's not the village of Broadview. Look at your taxpayer! Look at where your taxes go. Your taxes go to Cook County, they go to the school districts, they go to the library board, they go to the park district, and to the village. So, it's not solely on the shoulders of the village, your taxpayer. Please, for those of you that pay taxes, pay your property taxes, please look at, please investigate your property taxes, because it's not all... The money's not all coming to the villages. We're not the ones that's causing the enormous increase in your taxes. And oh, by the way, for the last three years, we've had them come out, we've had them come out to talk to you about addressing your taxes, about appealing your taxes. We've done that in Village Hall, we've done it here, we've done it in Maywood. They come out and they specifically tell you how to appeal your taxes, and it's based on the value of your current home. If the value of your home is going down, you have the ability to go and appeal those taxes every year. Every year you get your tax bill, and the value of your property has gone down, you have a right to make the appeal. Yes, sir?
I got a question. That's one of my questions. I went online to appeal. It's blocked.
It's only a certain time period, and that's in October, November? There's a timeframe when you can appeal. There's a window. It's October, right? There's a window of opportunity to appeal, and they tell you that. That's why we bring them out in the summertime before the window comes up. We bring them out in the summertime, then... I understand that they raised the taxes, but you've got to appeal it.
I told them, and they raised it.
Then, then, did you go...
Don't appeal it.
Did you go to the commissioners?
I went to the office, over on... Mayor's office, and I did all the process. I appealed my taxes for four years straight, and every year it's raised.
You know what? I can't explain that. That's something that I'd have to have to talk to one of the commissioners about.
Ma'am, would you like to explain what Jim was explaining earlier regarding not raising the rates for so many years that that could have caused maybe?
Not raising which rates?
The water rates. When we was observing the cost.
Oh, no, let me go.
I think that that could also answer her question as well. I'm just the trustee, that's all.
The initial question was, have we looked everywhere and looked at other areas to cut? All the things that everyone, the mayor and the trustee just did, all of those are correct. But those are in the area of the general fund. Has nothing to do with our water and streets, people. That's what our basic operation. As it relates to our streets and our water, which is what we're talking about here, we have increased rates for four years. No, no, ma'am, no, ma'am. In a general fund, where we pay for our police, our fire, and all your public safety, we actually have been running surpluses, so we are addressing a three million dollar... You might not like your answer, ma'am, but I will give it to you if you allow me to. In the general fund, that's just what our general operation. As it relates to tonight, which is what I would like to stick to if we could, which is the water and sewer, we have not raised your rates for four years, people. We have absorbed. The city of Chicago did fifteen percent, fifteen percent, fourteen percent. Last year, twenty-five percent. You did not see an increase in your water bill. Not until last year. We actually, I actually went back, ma'am. Last year, when it went up, it went up twenty-eight cents. And we actually told you that we were passing on the city of Chicago. That was last year for the first time, and four years, four years before that, it didn't go up. Can you remember that? It didn't go up for four years. And when we passed on, we only passed on the cost. At this point, the mayor's looking at financing the village's infrastructure needs. City of Chicago raising their rates because they're addressing their infrastructure. We need to address ours. And he's trying to be transparent and telling you upfront the various options that they are least considering. And that's all I had to say about that.
Next question, Kevin.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. This is the last question. The remaining questions that have not been answered at this point, we will entangle in detailed information. We will post it to the website. Vernon Smith was the last question. Vernon Smith here? So, we got your question answered? Thank you all very much for coming tonight. We appreciate your attendance. And again, if you have any further questions... And again, if you have any further questions, feel free to call the village at six-eight-one thirty-six hundred. Thank you.